Good evening, we'll now get started. The April 14th biannual public hearing will now come to order. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to share your comments with us tonight and we apologize profusely for the delay. The hearing is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed at fcpss.edu/tv/ch99. We have 25 registered speakers who will address the Board this evening. Each speaker is allotted two minutes. The timer will start when you begin to speak and will sound at the conclusion of your two minutes. If you have not registered but would like to speak, please see the Clerk to sign up for one of the five open slots. There will be an opportunity for individuals to speak if there are no-show speaker slots remaining at the end of the hearing. When your name is called, in-person speakers should approach the microphone and begin speaking promptly. Virtual speakers should unmute their microphones and begin speaking. Madam Clerk, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Anna Ramirez.
Mi nombre es Anna Ramirez y tengo diez meses de haber llegado al país. Soy estudiante de noveno grado en el condado de Fairfax. Aparte de la escuela, soy miembro de CASA y del programa "Mi Espacio" que este ofrece. Me gustaría compartir mi experiencia escolar. El primer día de clase fue difícil para mí porque en lugar de estar emocionada estaba asustada. No sabía lo que estaba pasando, solo sabía que tenía que subir al autobús escolar e ir a la escuela. Cuando llegué a la escuela y caminé por los largos pasillos, me perdí, no tenía idea a dónde ir. No hay mucha orientación por parte del sistema escolar para los estudiantes. Tenemos que aprender por nosotros mismos en las escuelas he sido intimidada por no saber el idioma y por mi estatus migratorio lo que me hace sentir vulnerable en la forma en la que encajo en la escuela. Apoyo a la política de confianza escolar para que los padres y estudiantes se sientan seguros y puedan concentrarse en sus estudios, sin preocuparse por su estatus migratorio. Miembros de la junta escolar los insto a apoyar la política de confianza escolar en el condado de Fairfax para que los estudiantes como yo podamos mirar hacia un futuro mejor.
My name is Anna Ramirez and I have been in the country for ten months. I am a freshman at a high school in Fairfax County. Aside from school, I'm a member of CASA and the "Mi Espacio" program it offers. I would like to share my school experience. The first day of school was hard for me because instead of being excited, I was scared. I didn't know what was happening, I just knew to get on the bus and get to school. As I got to school and walked through the long halls, I got lost. I had no idea where to go. There's not much guidance from the school system for students like me. We have to grow and learn as we go. In school, I have been bullied due to not knowing the language and because of my immigration status, which means I'm vulnerable in the way I fit in in school. I support the school trust policy so that parents and students feel secure and can focus on their studies without worrying about their immigration status. Members of the school board, I urge you to support the school trust policy.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cheryl Binkley.
Good evening, Board and staff. I come to you tonight because I want, it may be presumptuous for me to give you advice, given what y'all have experienced, but you're facing difficult transitions, you're gonna see continuing political stunts, and I just want to say that with the choices of staff and the choices of curriculum that you're doing these days, and resource materials and regulations and practices, remember what you already knew when you took office. You knew about respect for our interconnected diversity. You knew about love of learning and of the balance of nurture and challenge in our communities and systems. The staff are your allies and collective bargaining will serve to restore the kind of balance in our internal community so that it is less chaotic than it has been in recent times. It will help eel the divide that we see. And finally, so I want to just say, remember those things, but also remember, we elected you to lead. We did not elect the dark money moms. We did not elect the American Enterprise Institute. We did not elect the Independent Women's Forum, nor did we elect the Washington Post op-ed board or the Fairfax Times op-ed board. We elected you. So lead, we will follow, and we will work with you to make sure that we continue to have the most fabulous schools community that we could hope.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Burke. Mary Ann Burke?
Currently, 75% of US colleges and universities do not use standardized test scores in their admissions decisions because it has been shown these tests provide negligible additional information. But recently, the Coalition for TJ gave a lot of weight to MIT's decision to restart the SAT and ACT requirements for applications. But I must emphasize, MIT is not using the scores from these tests as admissions criteria. The bias in standardized tests is well documented. Scores are not correlated with academic potential, but instead they're correlated with family income regardless of ethnic background. Low-income students score lower on these tests whether they are African-American, Latinx, European-American, or Asian-American. Student grades are substantially more useful in predicting academic potential. Numerous studies have shown this. Nevertheless, some continue to insist that they are being deprived of their rights because a test biased in their favor has been discontinued. We should remember the racist beginnings of standardized testing. For more than a century, these tests provided a means to justify arbitrary racial hierarchies behind the guise of objectivity. And recently, historical documents from the 1955 were found at the University of Texas that showed that standardized tests were the school's strategy for slowing integration after Brown v. Board of Education's decision on desegregation. I commend the school board and Dr. Braybrand for understanding the importance of appealing Judge Hilton's uninformed decision on the admissions criteria at TJ. The case is important, not just for TJ and Fairfax County, but for the other governor's schools in Virginia and other schools across the US that are depending on us to get this right.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Holly Hazard. Our next speaker is Vanessa Hall.
Please consider improving safety and enforce the rules in this room so that civic engagement can be civil again. There's a clear line between fiery and abusive, a line that's been crossed too many times in this room. Neither the audience nor you should be subjected to verbal abuse or physical danger. Ridiculous costumes and outlandish behavior designed for viral videos are an obnoxious distraction from our schools. Enforce the rules and consequences for breaking those rules, because this space is for citizens, not a circus. Boldness, not bullying. Public input, not political pandering. On a different note, like many others, sorry to say, I'm disappointed in your desired choice for superintendent. I may not always agree with Dr. Braybrand, but I know that he cares for and tries to support FCPs students across 198 schools. I've heard concerning stories and seen terrible data about your preferred candidate. They tell a story that involves disinterest in community input, lack of commitment to equity, dismissal of LGBTQIA, and special education concerns and retaliatory actions. We need a superintendent who will listen and work to make education better and safer for all students, no matter their race, their religion, ability, income, gender, or sexual orientation. I truly hope that whatever candidate you choose is successful and does right by our FCPs community. Nevertheless, I'm troubled because I find myself in agreement for the very first time ever with people who have attacked the very foundation of public education, including those in this room who have called me nasty names, heckled me, and threatened harm to me and my family. Yet I'm scared to say I agree with them on this one point and this one point only. Please reopen the superintendent search. Overwhelmingly, the community does not support your choice. Please re-instill confidence by reopening the superintendent search and thank you and I'm sorry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Alejandro. Our next speaker is Christian Martinez.
My name is Christian Martinez-Lemus, the advocacy specialist at CASA. We at CASA have over 10,000 immigrant working-class and Latino-Virginian members with over 40% of our community members living in Fairfax County. At CASA, we focus on the three pillars: community services, community organizing, and community advocacy. CASA is in full support of the school trust policy. The school trust policy will confirm the school board's commitment to providing a safe and welcoming space for all students and their families. In addition, this will align Fairfax Public's trust and confidentiality policy, ensuring that students and families can access FCPs benefits and services without a fear that information will be disclosed directly or indirectly to federal immigration officials. Fairfax County currently has over 352,000 immigrant residents residing here. Therefore, all students in Fairfax should have access to a safe education and not have themselves or their families' private information gathered by US Immigration and Customs Enforcement to be at risk of deportation. Viviana, a CASA community member and Fairfax County resident, supports the policy. She is a mother of two children in the school system, something many of us can relate to already. Her 15-year-old, though, faces racism in school questioning their documentation status. Students are there to learn, not be interrogated, to have their private information sent to immigration officials. Regardless of citizenship status, we believe everyone should be treated with decency and respect. We continue prioritizing our students' education and consider everyone's safety and potential. We urge you to please pass the student trust and confidentiality policy on April 28th and support all Fairfax families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcela Levine.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you today. I ask you to adopt the draft school trust policy in its current form without amendment so that it will be ready for full implementation by the start of the next school year. Our community has an interest in maximizing the potential of every child in the Fairfax County public schools to learn and develop. Yet students who come from families vulnerable to civil immigration enforcement have understandable worries about school that hinder their growth and learning. Studies from Stanford University and elsewhere have shown that due to feared ICE school enforcement, such students may be afraid to go to classes, participate in other school activities, and access needed health or nutrition assistance. Their parents may also fear going to parent...
We'll try that again. Our next speaker is Erin Lamb.
My name is Erin Lamb and I am currently concluding my seventh year teaching in Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm also a member of the Fairfax Education Association, but tonight I'm speaking as an individual and a community member. This evening, I would like to speak specifically about the importance of a strong collective bargaining agreement. Before getting into specifics, I would like to respectfully point out that no matter a school system's budget, the quality of the education provided will never reach its true potential unless the people who carry out the work have their voices heard, are valued, and have a seat at the table when important decisions, the decisions that directly impact our students, get made. We trust doctors to care for us when we are sick because they are trained and experienced. Pilots fly our planes with a remarkable safety record because they are trained and experienced. Our bridges and buildings and ports and infrastructure last decades because they're engineered and built by trained, experienced professionals. We turn to entrust these highly trained and experienced people because they know best. We educators are rigorously trained to identify and meet students' needs, and we do it every day. And because we work directly with kids and know them by name and by need, we are the expert practitioners of education. We are the ones who know best. And yet the teachers, social workers, librarians, and all the other professionals who best know our students do not currently have any meaningful voice in the processes that decide how to meet these students' needs. So regardless of FCPs's budget, our students are simply not going to benefit from the knowledge and know-how of their biggest advocates until we faculty and staff members are invited to share our expertise. And that can happen only with a strong, comprehensive collective bargaining agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kripa Pat Warden.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me here. I'm very pleased to hear that two people before me have already spoken to the importance of the proposed trust policy, and I'm here on behalf of EduFuturo, an organization that empowers the immigrant communities of Northern Virginia. And I wish to echo the sentiments of both speakers before me who spoke up in favor of the school trust policy. This policy will help protect the safety of our immigrant students. It will empower them to take full advantage of the resources that FCPs has to offer and better reach their full potential to better fulfill the portrait of a graduate. Okay, I'm also a former teacher at FCPs, but yeah, so I echo their support of the proposed school trust policy. This will allow them to better reach their full potential without having their fear of ICE be a barrier to their success. So to that end, I, both as an individual and as an employee of EduFuturo, am urging the school board to adopt the trust policy swiftly and fully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marcela Levine, are you on? Okay, our next speaker is Margarita Brown.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I thank every one of you for your commitment to the schoolchildren of Fairfax County. Every child has the right to learn in a nurturing environment, supportively, free of fear and intimidation. Knowing your family is safe is a big part of that supportive environment, and a big part of that is knowing that their personally identifying information is safe. No one wants their private data shared. We would all benefit from development of a system-wide, secure communication platform for FCPs families that allows them to connect without requiring disclosure of information such as email addresses, phone numbers, and mailing addresses. In this era of data breaches, only truly relevant data should be collected on FCPs forms. Also, the conditions under which such data may be shared need to be clearly specified, for example, if it's required to fulfill the mission of FCPs or if required by state law. FCPs students have federal protections under FERPA, but there are still some gray areas that need further coverage. For example, there is insufficient protection of student information made available through outsourcing to contractors and vendors, such as those for food services, collection of activity fees, school photographs, and health services. We also need specific prohibitions to such vendors than providing student-family information to third parties, such as large data-mining contractors, not subject to FERPA restrictions. Toward these ends, the Governance Committee's scrutiny of the school trust policy has resulted in a strong, concise plan to bring FCPs in accordance with the trust policy of the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and Commonwealth's Attorney. I urge you to pass it without further amendments so that it may be in place for the next school year. Again...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tara Henigan.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tara Henigan. I have a junior at Marshall High School. I wanted to thank the Board and Mr. Braybrand for listening to my comments this evening. My school board representative is Mr. Frisch, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for you, and I'm very sorry for everything that you've had to go through in the last And, you know, so we have some of the best schools in this country, and we have outstanding leadership throughout the years that my daughter's been going through FCPs schools. And parents across the country right now are putting their time and energy into attacking our school boards, our schools, and the material that's in our libraries. And the thought that a straight kid can read a book about a penguin with two dads is going to turn them gay for some reason is utterly absurd. So, FCPs has always prided itself on being inclusive, and now a few outspoken, right-wing parents who don't represent the majority of the parents in FCPs are trying to create a problem where there isn't one. We need to work together to improve our schools, like improving teacher pay, so they can live in Fairfax County in a livable wage. Work on helping manage COVID, overcrowding, outdated buildings, and teach our children how to treat other people properly. We need to move forward in a collaborative effort to improve our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vivian Valverde.
Mi nombre es Viviana Valverde. Soy oriunda de Ecuador. Emigre a este país en el 2014. Desde entonces vivo en el condado de Fairfax, que ha sido mi hogar específicamente en Fall Church. Soy miembro de CASA hace un año. Como madre de familia, me dedico a trabajar en el área de limpieza. Tengo dos hijos, una niña de nueve años y un adolescente de quince años. Estoy aquí para exponer una situación que nos preocupa, que hemos vivido en la escuela donde ellos estudian principalmente, con mi hijo de quince años que sufre racismo por parte de sus compañeros, al punto de generar gritos diciendo que tú eres latino, no tienes papeles. Hemos tratado de que cede esas presiones por parte de los estudiantes exponiendo la situación a las autoridades respectivas en las escuelas, pero muchas veces existe el miedo al hablar, quejarse porque tenemos preocupación de que nuestra información sea compartida con otras entidades y como familia susceptibles a esta acción racista. Por esta razón apoyo a la política de confianza en las escuelas para que los miembros de la junta escolar tomen acción para que las escuelas del condado de Fairfax puedan adoptar dicha política, ya que es muy importante el proteger la información de datos de las estudiantes. Y nosotros como padres de familia para que podamos sentirnos bien interactuando con las escuelas y expresarnos libremente al recibir los servicios, exponer problemáticas que pasan con nuestros hijos, y acceder a los programas y diversas actividades que ofrece las escuelas. Gracias por escuchar mi testimonio.
Hello, my name is Vivian Valverde, originally from Ecuador, and for eight years Fairfax County has been my home specifically in the Colmore area. I became an active member of CASA a year ago, and now I'm supporting and enforcing community with the Safe Streets Campaign. I'm a mother of two children and waiting their arrival for their third child.
Our next speaker is Iris Yanis.
Point of order, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask that in the case of translations, if the speaker themselves finishes within the time that we allow them to finish the translation.
Without objection, I think that is fine. Thank you, Ms. Abrah.
Our community has suffered the ravages of the high speed and lack of visibility of the area, and I'm especially concerned that there are still cases of crashes that unfortunately have already claimed human losses. We no longer want that for the community, at least we need to reduce those types of incidents. That is why I'm here as a mother of a family representative of the community that circulates this area every day and in the condition that I find myself of during my pregnancy. I raise my voice and ask Fairfax County officials to take the lead and work for our community, as if properly illuminating the roads, putting automated lights, speed reducers, marked signage for pedestrians. Thank you for hearing my testimony. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Iris Yanis.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Iris Yanis. Soy dirigentaria de Honduras y resido en la ciudad de Anandel. Soy madre de familia, tengo un hijo adolescente de doce años. Me dedico al área de limpieza de casa. Por mucho tiempo me he sentido insegura porque tengo un estatus migratorio irregular, y a pesar que mi hijo es nacido en este país y asiste a la escuela, como madre de familia siempre estoy con el miedo de que mi información esté expuesta a las autoridades de inmigración. Para mí, todos los niños y jóvenes deben tener acceso a una educación segura y no permitir que el servicio de inmigración tenga información privada de nosotros mismos y de nuestras familias, corriendo el riesgo de ser deportados. Por esta razón apoyo la política de confianza y les pido por favor que lo aprueben, y eso permitiría no tener el miedo de saber de que nuestra información y la de otros padres de familia y sus hijos que no son nacidos en este país puedan ser adquiridas por inmigración. Muchas gracias.
Hello, my name is Iris Yanis. I'm originally from Honduras. I live in the city of Anandel, Virginia. I immigrated to this country 16 years ago, and I am an active member of the CASA organization. I am the head of my family. I have a 12-year-old teenage son, and I work in the area of cleaning houses. I immigrated to this country due to the poverty and lack of opportunities that existed in my country. For a long time, I have felt insecure because I have the irregular immigration status, and despite the fact that my son was born in this country of the United States and attends school, due to my legal status, I am always afraid that my information is going to be exposed to these immigration entities such as ICE. To me, all children and youth in Fairfax should have access to a safe education, and schools should not allow Immigration and Customs Enforcement to collect private information and these kids or their families risking deportation. For this reason, I support the student confidentiality policy, and that would allow me not to be afraid, knowing that my information or other parents and their children who were not born in this country remains private and that they can acquire services and apply to programs without no fear. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Samper. Kathy Samper. Our next speaker is Aria Hernandez. Our next speaker is Juana Munoz.
Hola, mi nombre es Juana Munoz. Soy de nacionalidad hondureña, resido en la ciudad de Sprinfield, Virginia, y soy miembro de CASA desde hace aproximadamente más de un año. También soy madre de familia de un hijo que estudia en la escuela elementaria del condado de Fairfax. Como inmigrante en los Estados Unidos, muchas veces tengo miedo con respeto a mi información personal, ya que soy una madre indocumentada y tengo el temor de que mi información sea compartida con otras agencias o con ICE. Por tal motivo, muchas veces siento miedo en la escuela y se me hace difícil que mi hijo se pueda inscribir en diferentes programas educativos porque siempre tenemos que dar toda nuestra información personal o presentar una identificación de nuestro país, lo que nos hace más obvio ser identificadas como indocumentados. Por eso estamos luchando para que las escuelas se comprometan a proteger nuestra información, que sea algo privado. Por esta razón yo apoyo la política... Por esta razón yo apoyo la política de confianza para las escuelas del condado de Fairfax, ya que considero que esto nos ayudaría a poder vencer el temor sobre el comportamiento y de nuestros datos personales, y nos proporcionaría bienestar, seguridad, y confianza de garantizar que los padres e hijos inmigrantes de nuestro condado puedan acceder a los beneficios y servicios de las escuelas sin temor, sin limitación, y tener un abierto que compartamos, que compartimos sea divulgada a los funcionarios federales de inmigración. Gracias por escuchar mi testimonio.
Hello, my name is Juana Munoz. I am a Honduran nationality. I live in the city of Springfield, Virginia. I have been a member of CASA, the Virginia organization, for almost a year. I am the mother of a minor child who is in elementary school in one of the Fairfax County public schools. As an immigrant in the United States, I am often afraid when it comes to personal information because I am an undocumented mother. I am afraid of my information will be shared with other agencies or with ICE. For the reason, many times I am afraid at school, and it is difficult for my son to enroll in different educational programs. We always have to give all our personal data or present an identification from our country, which makes it more obvious that I am undocumented. At the same time, fear arises as I believe that schools are not committed to protect the rights of students and parents. For this reason, I support the trust policy for Fairfax County schools, as I believe that it would help us to overcome fear. The policy provides us with well-being, security, and confidence by ensuring that parents and immigrant children of our country will be able to access school benefits and services without fear that the information we share will be disclosed to federal immigration officials. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tegistas Fay.
My name is Tegistas Fay, a mother of a current 10th grader and two graduates at West Springfield High School. You all know the serious ongoing issues we've been facing started in 10 years ago and continued till this date with cover-ups, retaliation for the many wrongdoings I have found out in the schools and reported, which everyone has ignored and to properly investigate and address. What we've been through will make a book, and this is the kind you hear on 2020, unfortunately. In December 2020, I met with the West Springfield High School principal and the science team after I was emailed a letter informing me that all science fair honor projects were canceled due to the pandemic, while the truth was actually this project and the science fair were still going on for other students. Recently, I found out about the regional science fair that has been running in FCPS for 67 years, that that is also a portrait of graduates that was completely hidden from my daughters and some of the students and families I have talked to. You are all in the recent communication, email communication I had with the principal and the region four leadership where I have asked specific questions on how other students got this information, while my students and other students did not have any information about this, and they actually had a representative from the, from the science instructional services where they actually came and presented to introduction to the science fair, and which none, everything was hidden from my students and some few other students. However, the principal and region four leadership has been dodging the questions, throwing words like "opt-in," "opt-out," "posting," "announcing," "science club," "after-school club," and so on.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Casey Blaylock.
My name is Casey Blaylock, and I'm a middle school librarian. I became a librarian because you get to work with every single student, teacher, staff, and family member, and because literacy is such a complex and multifaceted concept, it's a fundamental way of helping others. I'd like to thank everyone who spoke about libraries at the last school board meeting. We value our relationships with everyone in our communities and ask for your continued support. In order to get a better perspective of why we are asking for support, I'd like you to imagine that you're in a shopping mall where there are 999 patrons, and those people have families with them. In this mall, there's just one restaurant, and I'm the chef. I'm a great chef, Michelin star, highly trained. I have fresh local ingredients, and the space is beautiful. You want to eat at my restaurant, but there's a catch. I'm the only employee for the entire restaurant, and in this mall, I serve everyone, reservation or no reservation. I take the orders, I cook and serve the food, and I keep the restaurant clean, safe, and stocked. Would you still want to eat at my restaurant? I probably won't be able to cook to order. I probably won't be able to use my fresh local ingredients. Depending on how many customers are in the restaurant, you may have a very long wait. That's what it's like to be a school librarian. We are only able to do what we are staffed to do. I challenge you to think of another instructional school-based position where the caseload is 999 students. Imagine what we could do if we staffed the restaurant adequately. What we could do for our students, teachers, for literacy in the district. It's time to change our perspective on what our libraries can be, because right now, every library staff member is walking around with a number over our heads, our projected enrollments. My caseload will roughly go from 486 to close to 950 next year, after the de-staffing of my wonderful co-librarian and friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Adams.
My name is Kimberly Adams, and I am speaking on behalf of the Fairfax Education Association, a union representing thousands of your employees, employees who continue to work as hard as they can for the success of their students. This month, we welcome new faces to FCPS leadership. The FEIA expresses its desire to work collaboratively with the new superintendent and assistant superintendent of human resources. We have spent decades working for the best outcomes for students and staff in FCPS under a multitude of leaders, and in fact, FEIA just celebrated its 100th anniversary last year during this pandemic. This school year has brought innovative ways to engage students around mental health needs and address their, their interrupted learning. We talk about interrupted learning or learning loss for our students, but not about interrupted training for our staff. The FEIA is asking today for a deeper probe by HR into any employee that a supervisor has recommended for termination in the coming months. This is the first year for many of those who were hired and worked entirely online or during the pandemic last year. Both staff and students had only about six months developing and redeveloping the skills necessary for successful return to what we all wish was normal by now, but isn't quite normal yet. This board and administration must take steps to extend grace for new employees who need mentorship and time to implement strategies that were shared with them just months ago at the end of January or beginning of February in their evaluations. We are asking FCPS to also offer our administrators opportunities to grow as evaluators, to be mindful of when additional support and chances to improve are available and offered in a timely manner. They have not had time to adequately and effectively train and evaluate these people who work for them. Under normal circumstances, the probationary period is three years, and it can even be extended to five for those who need additional time to grow and achieve continuing contracts. Employees deserve the benefit of the doubt, and we all still remain effective.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Mallard.
I'm Cole Mallard, the father of three former FCPS children, retired voice of America, director, broadcaster, Vietnam vet, and a taxpaying resident of Fairfax County for over 35 years. Please join me in imagining the future of Fairfax County public schools. Here is what I imagine. In the future, I'll be standing here and able to say thank you to the school board members for eliminating critical race theory embedded in the FCPS curriculum, which means no more divisiveness, no more pitting students against each other with the concept of oppressors and oppressed. Thank you for implementing policies which guide teachers and administrators to compassionately work with children and which no longer confuse them about their gender, about their parents' authority, and other parental rights. Thank you for your focus on the basics of reading, writing, mathematics, science, and the arts. Thank you for removing pornographic materials from the school libraries, replacing them with the classics, the true history of the founding and development of the United States. Thank you for lifting mask mandates and for lifting promotion of gene therapy inoculations and other destructive measures taken due to the COVID pandemic, which did damage to our children. Thank you for the policies which address the many considerations of our special needs students. Thank you for removing race-based admissions policies to Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology and for returning to a meritocracy. And finally, thank you for ending the grooming and sexualization of our children and giving them back their childhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Mallard.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. In addition to other things you've learned about me, my two science degrees in language acquisition and development, I also am a member of a group of Fairfax County educators, parents, healthcare providers, and biologists, and that group is called Parent and Child. About three years ago, we put together this grid, and one of them is attached to the materials I gave Beverly Madeja. I just want to show it to the audience. This grid rates the different FLE lessons, and there are, of course, are some things which are very troublesome. I won't go into them right now, but anyone who wants to can go to the Parent and Child website and get our rating system. Did you all do your homework? Remember, I asked you to please read this book? This book is not pornographic, although it explains how our FLE got started with Alfred Kinsey, with Hugh Hefner of Playboy, and with Margaret Sanger, a racist. Margaret Sanger said, "We don't want the word to go out. We want to exterminate the Negro population." That's Margaret Sanger, Planned Parenthood, and that is one of the people who has been involved with the, collaborated with the development of your FLE. So do be careful, because I think you don't really know what is going into this. I did want to say that to the Spanish speakers, buenas noches, muchas gracias por sus palabras, y ustedes no saben que están en este FLE.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashra Nemaney.
Hello, can you hear me fine?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, great. So I'm back in my mom's home in West Virginia where I started the COVID, you know, quarantine period in 2020, and then I warned you at that time that you had to stop, and you had to stop the indoctrination of our schools. You had to stop this movement that you were making to overrun Thomas Jefferson High School. But what did you do instead? You spent $20,000 on anti-racism teachings by Ibram Kendi, didn't you? And what have you done since then? You have landed the Fairfax County Public School System in the Supreme Court. We have fought with you as parents. I feel so sorry for these poor parents that are immigrants like ourselves. You can't even do them the honor of listening fully to their translations, and so then you finally fixed your problem. But what is this that you send upon us, the parents? You send your proxies and your trolls. Well, you know what's going to happen tonight? You, the Fairfax County School Board, is going to have a rigged vote. It's going to be a rigged vote, eight to four. I want all the parents to know that you are going to vote for the Michelle Reed, the superintendent that you have selected. Abra Omeish is going to try to delay the vote, but it's going to be another eight to four vote, and she's going to lose her attempts to delay the vote. Ultimately, what is it? Woke politics. The woke politics that's destroying TJ and is destroying Fairfax County public schools in its race to the bottom. You did not choose a Virginia school superintendent as a finalist because he's white. You want to pick the other superintendent that you were from Omaha because she's black. It's race politics, and you need to stop all of this nonsense and get back to education and stop your activism.
Our next speaker is Shelley Arnoldi.
I was here a couple months ago, and I asked you all for some metrics. I wanted to understand how you guys were measuring what you were doing, and I've since found out that you guys actually had them, so I've done a little bit of homework. And now I'm trying to understand how parents can give input on your goals so that they can actually affect what's happening with our children. And one specifically, I'm trying to understand how your caring culture is measured by the number of referrals, yet I look at instances at the school where we're not getting told anything. And I'm going to say, I have four high school students in a school which they say it's normal for a child to be taken out of school in an ambulance. They say it's normal, and I shouldn't complain about it, yet I've never once been told about a child being taken out of school in an ambulance. One month ago, I learned that a child hung herself in the bathroom. A student found that, that student, called a parent, did CPR, and the kid was taken out of school. Kids told their parents, parents told me, my kids told me, the school didn't tell us. They said it was a medical emergency. So what I'd like to know is how many kids are taken out of school in ambulances? How many overdoses? How many suicides? That is how you measure a caring culture. The health and safety of our students is all that matters. If medical emergencies are happening, parents have the right to know. I was told directly by the principal that I was spreading misinformation because I said what I heard from children. Well, I'd love to hear it from the principal. The other thing I wanted to talk about, if I have 30 seconds, okay, you talked about the budget. Well, I did study the budget, and you guys have $1.9 million in the budget for legal, yet you guys are spending almost $6 million a year on legal fees to defend yourselves against parents. I think that the parents should have some input on what's going on with your legal fees. It's crazy. Hundreds of thousands of dollars a month you guys are spending on legal fees, yet no discussions or updates. How about updates, monthly updates on what's happening in the legal world for you? So, I'm out of time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Cooper Gold.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Diane Cooper Gold, and tonight I'm speaking as advocacy chair of Fairfax County Special Education BTA. Among so many shouting voices in this time of educational turmoil, I'm here to bring focus onto the needs of the over 30,000 students with disabilities in Fairfax County public schools and the staff that work tirelessly with them. Our population of students on IEPs is larger than many school districts, and yet due to cultural bias, low expectations, staffing shortages, and a wide spectrum of needs, our students' needs often go unmet. The result is that children with immense potential and unique perspectives get lost in the system. They're often the recipients of subpar education and disproportionate discipline. They're funneled into underemployment and the school-to-prison pipeline, and for intersectional students, the outcomes become even more dire. While we thank this board for passing an updated policy banning seclusion and limiting restraint, we are deeply concerned about the lack of transparency, follow-through, and deliberate planning for the implementation of that policy. We are almost a year and a half on from its adoption, and yet our community of staff and parents have yet to receive a specific plan for the rollout of training for alternative collaborative problem-solving solutions and crisis management countywide across all educational settings and age ranges. Staff feel unprepared to deal with students with complex needs, and parents are scared to send their children to school, and it's the students that bear the brunt of an indeterminate and under-prepared system. We continue to receive reports of violations of the new policy and actions that may meet the letter of the law rather than the spirit of it. Our community is tired of having to constantly push for accountability and transparency. We're saddened by the fact that lawsuits bring more systemic change than collaboration. We don't want to be placated. Our volunteers have spent an inordinate amount of time pushing for equity, inclusion, and proactive problem-solving, and yet we are met with a constantly reactive system. We want to partner We want to partner with you, not fight against you, and we want to know that our students are safe in your care. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Levin, are you there? Can you hear us? Marcella Levin?
Yes, I am now.
You want to continue? Go ahead, you have a minute left.
Okay. The school system can address the concerns that children with immigrant families have by instituting further safeguards against data mining by ICE. The school trust policy as currently written builds in these safeguards to ensure that sharing of personal contact or other information about students and their families occurs only when legally required or when necessary to achieve educational goals and that third-party contractors with the school system are bound by the same data disclosure standards. Moreover, adopting the school trust policy will better align the school system with the overall goal of Fairfax County to be a welcoming community is reflected in the Board of Supervisors' trust policy and in policies set by the police and sheriff's departments and the Commonwealth attorney. So I urge you to pass the school trust policy as written. Thanks again.
Thank you. We have the five additional slots. Sujatha Hampton.
My name is Sujatha Hampton. I am the education chair and third vice president of the Fairfax County NAACP. You know, I tried to talk to you, to tell you about the data and to warn you, but sadly no one would listen, so I'll just read from an email that was sent to the full board and also to me from a former student of North Shore School District. Sydney is black and queer. She lives in the space of intersectionality, something so often overlooked conveniently by so-called allies. I will read from the email, but there's a lot and I won't get to it. It will be posted in its entirety later. Sydney describes valiant efforts to organize and to bring change on many fronts, including racial justice and LGBTQ awareness. She shares a petition which was signed by 599 students, most complete with detailed narratives. This petition began, quote, "Dr. Reed's cycle of creating student-focused groups and then to ignore what we bring up. As a high-achieving two-sport athlete who happened to also be of color, I was frequently invited to these groups. We would spend hours addressing our concerns only to find that Dr. Reed was making no effort to institute change. When there have been promises made, there is concerning fine print. For instance, she proposed that the district would implement more staff of color, yet failed to mention that the plan would cap employing people of color when the number of staff reached the student population of color. My pressure, often pressure from upper-class white parents would make her, quote, 'rescind her position.' My freshman and junior year in high school, the district announced they would acknowledge Pride Month, parents complained, and when June rolled around, nothing happened. What happens in the state, in a state like Virginia where queer youth's personhood and safety is constantly put at risk? Dr. Reed has capitulated before, why wouldn't she capitulate again to angry parents trying to ban books and bathrooms and label ordinary behavior as grooming? Rewrite history to fit a convenient narrative? Virginia is not Washington. We were inundated with stories from family..."
Thank you. Our next speaker is George Becerra.
Good evening, Chairman Bukarski, school board members, and Superintendent Braybrand and County Executive Hill streaming. My name is George Becerra. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee, one of your school board advisory committees. As you are close to deciding to who the next superintendent is, I want to shift your focus to the immediate future after this decision is made. First, as MSA has stated since last year, the GR consulting firm should have no more than one more future contract with FCPS. That should be the one where the new superintendent and the school board retreat together to start the bond building and to set realistic expectations and performance appraisal objectives for the new superintendent. The last firm, HY, had many contracts beyond this point in the last eight years, which included the creation of the strategic plan and several leadership team selection oversights. This was like the gift that kept on giving after its original intent was complete. As you embark next school year and creating a new FC, FCPS strategic plan, just like the Board of Supervisors just completed this past year for the county, a new firm should be chosen that has experience and expertise in creating these types of plans. Also, the oversight of LTE hires should be kept in-house from the beginning of the process to then with your own HR department. Second, start planning as soon as possible with the new superintendent for the next biggest hire, or some people might say the biggest hire in FCPS, which is to fill the vacancy of the chief equity officer. As much as these, do not like to hear this, MSAAC would advocate for Dr. Nardis King, the interim CEO, to be the next permanent one, but we understand that this is a personal decision and will respect what she and her family decides on pursuing. Nothing can take away from the decades of fighting the good fight. Either way, MSAOC deems it necessary that the new CEO work hand-in-hand with Dr. Presidio, the chief academics officer. Let me restate again, hand-in-hand, not side-by-side. This is crucial. Thank you for your time and I wish all you that celebrate Easter, happy Easter Day and season.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Omar Al Baba.
Hello, my name is Omar Al Baba. I'm a student at Oakton High School and the current president of the Oakton Muslim Student Association. I like to start off by saying how privileged I feel to have a platform as a student. It's my obligation and civic duty to express and share my concerns on important and personal matters. I also believe that I'm only the second student to voice my opinion, so please, hear me out. In 2016, my sister experienced texts from a classmate who held hateful views against Muslims during the height of the Trump presidential campaign, which brought a lot of discrimination against Muslims in the United States. The student, the student that sent derogatory and Islamic and Islamophobic hate speech to my sister faced minor disciplinary action. The case was dismissed with no plan to tackle the issue at hand. Six years later, we've still made no progress. I'm sure you're all familiar with the case regarding Ekron at Fairfax High School where a student hijab was pulled off. That following week, the city of Fairfax Police Department released a press release conducting their final review of their investigation. The MSA presidents, or Muslim Student Association presidents across FCPS all disagreed with this conclusion. We believe that the police department conducted a poor investigation since there were at least three witnesses to the incident that were not interviewed. It's very difficult for the Muslim students of FCPS to cope with these situations. We simply do not understand why Islamophobia continues to be a huge, yet ignored problem in our school system. While we tackle these situations, the search for a new FCPS superintendent has begun. We ask that student voices be considered when selecting a new superintendent so that we can have an ally who can help us tackle and finally eliminate all xenophobia in Fairfax County Public Schools for this generation and the next. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leslie Houston.
Good evening. I am Leslie Houston and I'm a special education teacher. I want to make it very clear that tonight I am not speaking on behalf of Fairfax Education Association. I'm speaking as Leslie. I feel compelled to share my thoughts about this school, how this school board handled the process for the superintendent search. In this country, I watch how Black women are portrayed as saviors of democracy, yet when it comes to utilizing the democratic process, we come up short, we come in second, or we are treated with contempt and outright disrespect, even when we enter the process overqualified, poised, and with confidence. We prepare for interviews, choosing our words carefully, making sure not to offend anyone, praying we get a fair chance, a simple opportunity to showcase our skills. For what? To once again be shown that we are not good enough, not your choice, not right for this county. Integrity and transparency should be your guiding principles. This board should promote a sense of openness and fairness, but I stand here today because you did not do so regarding this superintendent search. I have supported this board, but it is now crystal clear that this board has not led with integrity regarding this progress, process. Today, I am saddened, but not surprised because as a Black woman, I have come to expect this. The rose-colored glasses are off. Dr. Maya Angelo said, "When someone shows you who they are the first time, believe them." Thank you for showing me in this community who you are, and I guarantee, we will not...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ekron Mohammed.
I want to start off by thanking all students and the Muslim community for your support. For those who don't know me, my name is Ekron Mohammed. I'm 17 years old and a sophomore at Fairfax High School. On December 14, 2021, when many hijabis fear, happening to them happened to me. You always hear about Muslim sisters dealing with people who target them for wearing their hijab, but you don't...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, could we ask the speaker to bring the microphone further down so we can hear her better? Thank you so much.
On that day, sorry. You always hear about Muslim sisters dealing with people who target them for wearing their hijab, but you don't think it would happen to you in your own school. On that day, I was bothered by Islamophobic comments. My friends and I decided to leave the class and that is when my hijab was grabbed. An altercation happened, which led to the school calling the ambulance and I had no hijab on. When the paramedics arrived, the administrator said that I had a panic attack and nothing else happened. The next day, I served in school suspension with my attacker in the same room. The police lied and said my hijab was not taken off, even though there was multiple witnesses that saw. I was affected by this event physically and mentally. Thanks to students, there was a petition made after they heard that I served in school suspension with, with my attacker in the same room. They received over 35,000 signatures today and that still does not permit change. On December 16, there was a walkout at Fairfax High School and on December 17, there's another, other schools in Fairfax County that walked out to show support. I chose to speak about this incident because there's a great deal of Muslim students at Fairfax County who should not be targeted for their religion. And this stuff should not be happening to you in your own school where you're supposed to feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for sharing your comments and concerns with the board this evening. The public hearing is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break before convening the regular meeting. Thank you.